Are you recording?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Today is Monday, November 16, 2020. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If you can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is a first for us. We are now doing a hybrid in-person and Zoom meeting. This has been the era of firsts. So we'll try this one out. Myself and Therese are Zooming in because both of us have had some incidences where we sort of, with the school's policy of trying to adhere to the COVID restrictions, we're trying, in abundance of caution, follow that policy. Myself, I traveled for work out of state a week ago or so, a little less than a week. When I got back, I was tested, I was negative. But as per our school's policy, I'm staying away from the school for the required period of time, just in abundance of caution. And Therese, I'll let you explain why you're doing this.
I too have had an exposure to COVID-19. I have been classified as low to medium risk, but by the school policy, if any exposure, it doesn't classify risk. I too have tested negative now twice, but I'm just staying away from school grounds for 14 days to comply with policy. My kids, just in full disclosure, were not exposed to the individual, and since I am negative, they are at no risk and therefore attending school. So.
Yep. So we're just being cautious, just trying to be consistent with the school's policy, which is why we're doing what we're doing. So let's get started. We will start off with comments of the Board, from the Board members. We'll start with the in-person folks first. Laura, you want to go first?
Oh, sorry, Laura.
I said Laura.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Laura, it's close. Hi, welcome back, Pete. I actually am going to hold off on any comments, and we'll have some discussions at some point. So thank you.
All right, great. Laura?
Same.
All right. That's pretty easy. And Therese?
Oh, sorry. So I just wanted to say good evening. I can't see who's there. This is really weird, but who's ever joining us in person and virtually on air to thank you for your time and attendance. And I also want to give a shout out and a thanks to the administrators, the teachers, and the staff, who are all showing up every day to keep the kids stimulated in school. And when they're out of school, I just wanted to again acknowledge their efforts because it's definitely huge and appreciated. I also just, I always feel like it's my job and duty, not only as a Board of Ed member and as a parent, but also as a healthcare worker, to remind everybody to wash your hands well and wear your mask. It is the best way of preventing disease, period. That's it for me.
Thank you, Therese. And I forgot to mention that Cynthia is not joining us tonight. Cynthia had a family operation. Of course, we're not going to be able to be here tonight, so we don't have Cynthia, obviously. So me, I just wanted to make a quick comment about, just to address the fact that I'd missed the workshop last week, again, for that work trip that I was on. And I was a little bummed about that because that was, there were some very interesting topics that we talked about during that workshop that I wish I would have been able to have been a part of. So I wanted to just kind of address that, just real quick, make a couple of comments with my two cents in on those two topics. The first one was about the finances and how they look thus far this year with all the impacts from COVID. And then the other was the superintendent's presentation on the proposal to try and bring back fourth and fifth graders to in-person, full-time in-person learning. So on the first issue, just to recap for those that haven't seen it, Lilo did a good presentation and showed what the impact has been so far and what the impact could be going forward based on reductions in revenue and also added expenses. It looks like our worst-case scenario is about 1.3 million, about a million in lost revenue, potentially lost revenue, not for sure. Most of that comes from the potential to lose state aid, which we haven't lost yet. It's just being conservative about the fact that we may. And then about 178,000 or so in lost expenses, oh, sorry, additional expenses. And then maybe some more for the cost of moving to fourth and fifth grade. So I just wanted to say, you know, that 1.3 million is not good. Obviously, it's a little scary, it's a little daunting, but once again, because of the help of our finances and all the fund balance that we do have and the saving improvements that we've been doing over the years, we really are not in a crisis situation because of that. We have about 1.4 million in unallocated funds that we could put right towards that 1.3 if we need it all. So we'll be fine, there's no reason to panic, there's no reason to be concerned about staffing cuts or anything like that. What we will do, if we do realize that entire 1.3, is it will put a restraint on us for budgeting for next year. Because in the last couple of years, we have relied on unallocated fund balance to balance the budget, to make up the little gap of what we want and what we expect the revenues. There's always been a little gap there, and we've always used the unallocated balance, fund balance, to make up that difference. We may not have that going forward. But again, we'll see. I think we'll see by the end of the calendar year what the state aid picture looks like. That's the big driver here. It's about 50% of that 1.3 million is really the possible loss of state aid. So I'm not too worried about it. I'm concerned, but I'm not panicking, and I don't think anybody should. And I don't think that we should have to worry about things like staffing cuts anytime soon. So I just wanted to say that. And thank you, Lilo, Ms. Lu, for the presentation. I think it was very well done. And just briefly, I know we'll talk about this some more tonight with regard to the superintendent's presentation on bringing back fourth and fifth grades. I thought it was very well done. I am in full support of that. I'm very much aware of what's going on around us. I know things are spiking, I understand that. I think we'll have some more discussion about that tonight, but I still am very much in favor of it. And I reserve my comments for that as we go on through the night, but I thought it was a great presentation, and I'll for it. So that's all I have for my comments. Dr. Goodman, you in turn?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Pete. Good evening, Board trustees, community members, and colleagues. Before I begin my report tonight, we will hear from our student representatives. First, I would like to introduce Maria Spurbeck, a senior at Tuckahoe High School. Marina is one of our top students and is involved in many extracurricular activities. Marina currently has a 4.09 cumulative GPA, and her present top college choices are Cornell and Tulane. She has been selected as a student liaison to speak with us today on Tuckahoe's academics and her involvement in school activities.
Good evening, everyone. I am incredibly proud and honored to be speaking with you all today. My name is Marina Spurbeck, and I am a senior at Tuckahoe High School. I am involved in student government, varsity volleyball, National Honor Society, and multiple bands for the school. I have also recently submitted applications to Binghamton, Northeastern, Boston College, and other universities that offer early action. In college, I hope to double major in English with a creative writing concentration as well as biochemistry. My future aspirations include becoming a scientific researcher and writing a novel. At Tuckahoe High School, students have been on a hybrid schedule with Cohorts A and B alternating the days they go in, as well as following a block schedule. The first marking period ended November 12, and report cards have been sent out. Despite the coronavirus pandemic, THS has actively worked to restart clubs and organizations as safely and responsibly as possible. There was an asynchronous virtual club fair on Tuesday, November 3, which allowed students to rejoin or participate in the 31 clubs that Tuckahoe offers. Furthermore, on Thursday, October 29, and Friday, October 30, THS had its senior Halloween party, and the PTA handed out candy to middle school and high school students. The Halloween events were a great success, thanks to the PTA and the school's faculty and administration. Thank you all for listening to me today, and once again, I'm incredibly honored to have the opportunity to represent the Tuckahoe student body. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marina. Next is Nicolino Marcocchia, a senior at Tuckahoe High School. Nicolina currently has a 4.06 cumulative GPA, and he is a part of many extracurricular activities. He is a member of the National Honor Society and is vice president of the Italian Honor Society. He's also involved in many sports. He's currently playing goalie for the varsity soccer team and has played many sports such as bowling, golf, baseball, and basketball. Today, Nicolino will talk to you about sports in our school and the restrictions on soccer and all other sports to come.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. Hello, everyone. I'm Nicolino Marcocchia, and as Dr. Goodman said, I will be talking to you about the athletics in our school from my point of view as a student. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Tobin, Dr. Linehan, Dr. Goodman, Mrs. Pinto, all of the coaches and teachers, and our trainer, Scott, for making this season possible, and all of our upcoming sports events. We are currently in the first season of fall sports, which includes soccer and tennis, and we are required to wear masks in all of our games and practices in order to participate. We have a varsity boys and girls soccer team, along with a junior varsity boys team. The boys' varsity soccer team has 17 seniors and has a record of one win, five losses, and two ties. And today, we were supposed to play against Valhalla for our playoff game, but it got delayed because of, Valhalla had coronavirus cases. And we will either reschedule the game for tomorrow against Valhalla, or we'll move on to the next round and play Pleasantville on Wednesday. The girls' varsity team has five seniors and has a record of seven wins, one loss, and one tie. And they will be playing their playoff game on Thursday at 4:30 PM against either the LaFell High School or Hastings High School, as they have received a first-round bye. After the fall sports, then, we will be moving directly into winter sports that have been approved by the governor and the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. The only approved winter sport is currently bowling, and it will start on November 30. Basketball has not yet been approved, as it is a high-risk sport. Following the winter season, there will be another season of fall sports, including both volleyball and football, as they were both deemed high-risk sports, so they were required to be postponed until March. Offseason workouts for football have already been approved. However, they must be very small and very scripted. This split of the fall season sports will allow students to participate in four sports this year. I am very thankful for being chosen to speak tonight, and I want to close by saying, I think we all can agree that these have been some challenging times for our school district and the world because of the pandemic. On behalf of myself and a grateful student body, I want to thank our school board and entire administration, as well as our very talented teachers for all they have done for us this year in making it as normal as possible. I also know our students have been equally receptive to this challenge. Let's just hope we can continue this very difficult school year without any further interruptions or disruptions, and let's continue to be optimistic and work through these times we're in. Thank you.
I want to thank both of our student representatives. You both spoke beautifully. You did a great job. You really filled us in on so much. I will let you leave so that you can study, as I know you need to do with your block scheduling, lots of work to do. But you guys are fabulous. You really, really showed Tuckahoe in the best light, and this is why we're so proud to work here and to serve you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys are great.
Okay, now I can. I'll do my superintendent's report now, Pete.
I'm sorry. Second?
I'm going to do my superintendent's report.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. So as you know, at the last board meeting, we presented on increasing in-person education options. Our administrators, teachers, and staff deeply value reaching all students. The benefits of in-person instruction are undeniable, and we are recognizing spaces and analyzing student schedules in order to expand these efforts. We are currently working on bringing back our fourth and fifth grade students. Yes, keeping elementary schools open should be our top priority for our students' in-person learning. We also know that our state is facing a challenge, and nationally, our numbers are increasing. We are using a science-based approach focused on bringing back our elementary students based on data of schools. The real-life data, there are fewer cases in school settings than in communities at large. Although we also look at European data, which we presented, the New York State Department of Health acknowledges that overall, the positivity rates within school settings have remained low to date. This is most likely due to school settings adhering to the in-person instruction requirements. Now, the state has a mechanism to address clusters and aims to prevent further community spread transmission of the virus. And this includes new rules and restrictions directly targeted to areas with the highest concentration of COVID-19 cases and surrounding communities. The initiative divides clusters and the areas around three categories. The cluster itself, the red zone, a warning zone, which is the orange zone, and a precautionary zone, the yellow zone. Microclusters are defined by a variety of metrics, including positivity rates, hospitalization rates, geographic considerations, and other epidemiological factors. Each cluster imposes different restrictions for businesses and mass gatherings, and may include school-mandated testings and closures. Tonight, we will also have a resolution asking for the state to provide logistics, to provide financial support for these different clusters that we may be in that may force us to do surveillance testing. However, all of this understores the importance of following safety guidelines. We have heard reports of parties and gatherings, of loose adherence to recommendations. When we stop wearing masks and we stop socially distancing, we stop being able to operate schools. The state will take action, and we will put our school community at risk. We are watching the decision-making at the state level closely and the rates of this virus at the state level. If we do not follow these guidelines and protocols out of school, the state is going to force us to close. We know there are many in our community who are adhering to guidelines, but we need everyone. The teachers have been, and teachers and staff have been doing an incredible job. They want to be here. They are committed to safety protocols in our schools and have transformed their professional lives as a result. They have done so understanding the importance of in-person education. The Tuckahoe teachers and staff have been partners in our work, driven to provide in-person instruction to as many students as we can. They are among our community's greatest assets, as is our police, firefighters, community workers, doctors, nurses. They are the ones who are working during this pandemic. We are making decisions with our health and safety teams and our school physician. We are moving forward with plans for fourth and fifth graders full-time, and we are pausing on efforts to expand into the secondary school. We will continue to monitor trends and research as we chart our course forward. We remain committed to health and wellness, and will always prioritize the safety of our students and staff. We have repeated in many messages that Tuckahoe is in this together. This means that the faculty, staff, administration, and board can only move us forward if the community continues to be a partner in this. A positive case may not pose serious consequences to some, but it may for others. Additionally, a positive case imposes quarantines on a broad net of contacts. This means people who are otherwise happy, are healthy, are required to work from home, imposing a burden on our operational capacity and requiring a closure in some cases. While we hope to be able to avoid a microcluster designation, we need to work together. Again, we ask for your partnership and cooperation as we work through these difficult times together. We are committed right now to opening fourth and fifth grade students, again, because elementary is so important, and we are looking at data suggesting that they are safe with masking, social distancing, proper ventilation, and again, especially for our elementary schools. We want to work with you together. We want to hear from everybody. We want to follow the science, speak to our school physician, and really be a leader in education, as Tuckahoe should be and is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Goodman. Appreciate it. So next on the agenda, we have comments by our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Lu.
Thank you. I'll just say briefly that in the business office, we are working in conjunction with administration to purchase the equipment and supplies necessary and educational resources necessary to continue to operate in the manner that we are and to improve, to bring back the students as we can and get them to and from school safely. And that's what we're doing right now.
Thank you, Ms. Lu. I want to put you on the spot. Do you have any update for us on the construction in terms of the, how do we stand with the management company? I know they're asking for some additional monies. Do you have any update on that?
No, I don't. Not since what I had last told you.
Okay. We had stopped some punch list items that need to get done, and that vestibule is still pending, correct?
That's right. We're working with the contractor who is doing the vestibule in the middle school and high school. He's been having problems since the pandemic with his supplier for that replacement glass door. That's the only thing holding us up in the middle school and high school. So it may proceed to a point where there may be a lawsuit from the contractor toward his supplier. We have to see how that plays out. There's no financial risk to the district, but it's been an unfortunate delay.
Yeah.
And in Cottle, we are just finishing up punch list items, and we should be very close to completion of that project, hopefully by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. So now we'll move to our first recognition of the audience, which is for agenda items only. I wanted to just go over some of our policy and the ground rules for public comments. We have two public comment periods, as everybody knows. We have this one, which is for agenda items only, and then we have one at the end of the meeting for any topic that's not on the agenda, sort of like a wild card. So I just want to keep reminding folks of what our guidelines and policies are. It's just something we're trying to tighten up as a board, be a little better at. We do have a policy existing that for quite a few years we're following, so we're trying to stay more true to that policy. For those that want to check it out, it's Policy 1230 on Board Docs. And so what we do ask is, at the start of a meeting, that you do let us know ahead of time if you plan on speaking, who you are, if you're representing an organization, what organization you're representing, and generally what your topic is going to be. We are keeping comments to three minutes only. We can make exceptions to that rule if there's a special circumstance, if you want to ask ahead of time, and if we have time on the agenda, but generally speaking, three minutes is a rule for speaking time. We want to make sure that everybody keeps their comments professional and appropriate, and we also want to be a little better at not making these comment periods become debate sessions and back-and-forth dialogue. We certainly want to hear from the public, as we always do, what we think is important, and that we sort of adhere to those procedures. So what we'll do is if, you know, any board members do want to say something and reply to a comment that's made, we're going to wait until the end of all the comment period, and then I'll give each board member a chance to say something if they want to, but we're not going to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with the speaker. The speaker has their time, and they're going to say what they want to say, and that's it. And we also want to remind folks that we cannot talk about specific staff members or students during this time as well. So with that, do we have anybody who would like to say something about, anybody for the public who wants to speak about agenda items only?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Pete. Do you want to do the PTA before the public? Do you want to do?
Oh, I skipped that? Oh, I did. I did. I'm sorry. Thanks for keeping me honest, Rob. I apologize for that. How much about the PTA as our next agenda item? I skipped that. I apologize.
It's hard to flag you when you're on the computer. It's all right. But thank you. Well, first of all, hi, I'm Susan Millie. I'm the PTA president. Thank you, Pete and Therese, for doing the prudent thing of staying home and keeping other people safe, even if it may not be super-duper necessary. We appreciate it. And I wanted to ask if actually there's a way going forward for the general public to chime in during these meetings without having to come in person, if there's any technology or something we could allow. I want to thank all of the staff, the administrators, the teachers, all the building personnel. You guys are just incredible for persevering through this ordeal and doing it with such grace and success. And I can't believe the curveballs. I mean, the phone lines are down, the power went out, every single thing that could happen. And still, every time I speak to somebody, there's a smile, and I don't know how you're doing it, but thank you very much, and thank you for keeping our kids safe. As a small token of our appreciation, the PTA Community and School Relations Committee took advantage of the asynchronous learning day today by delivering refreshments to all the staff in both buildings. And we're very glad to be able to contribute. This small gesture, we got some nice feedback, but this is just a small representation of our gratitude. It's really important that we help keep our building staff safe. That, to me, is the best gift we can give. You guys are putting yourselves out there for our kids and to keep schools open. The least we could do is do our part and keep you guys safe. And towards that end, we, on the PTA, have been pivoting all year, and there have been times when people have said to us, oh, you know, the PTA is so famous for our events, our in-person events. That's what we're best known for in this district under normal circumstances, but this year, we're not doing them, unless it's something super safe, like we did. Our Cottle Committee had to figure out how not to disappoint those kids by not doing the traditional Halloween party, but they came up with this really awesome drive-through experience, the pumpkin parade. And we got such nice feedback, people are asking us to make that the new tradition. So I would consider that a great success, that it was so well-received, they want that to replace the Halloween party that we normally do. We also are going virtual in some respects. In fact, as we speak, the Dance Committee has launched virtual dance classes for our kids, and they started tonight, they're going on right now. And our Cultural Arts Committee delivered a virtual version of the Native American program that is always brought on as an annual tradition to the fourth grade, and I think the kids were really thrilled to have something to do on an asynchronous learning day other than their usual routine. So that also got us a lot of very nice feedback. We have, our Health and Safety Committee is now focusing some efforts on raising public awareness about the importance of COVID safety, especially with cases being on the rise. So you'll see some additional efforts going forward from them to help spread the word through this communications campaign. And above all, we want our teachers and our school staff to feel that we are taking care of them. We don't want any perception that we're not. I know our community is extremely grateful for our teachers. They always are. You always see piles of holiday gifts and end-of-year thank-yous, and we want to make sure that that translates into keeping them feeling safe. A couple other quick things. Our Ways and Means Committee has been busy yesterday, or rather, today, we had our second School Picture Day at Cottle for the virtual kids, siblings, and retakes. And our Spirit Wear Committee, which normally only does a fall clothing drive, is now selling super cozy pajamas and blankets with our school emblem for Cottle and the Middle School. So we hope everybody stocks up on holiday gifts. And then lastly, tomorrow night is the PTA's Fall General Meeting, which is open to the public. Again, that's going virtual. We're going to talk about ways to get involved with the PTA, what the PTA does, and we have a guest speaker that I'm very excited about, Cottle's very own Shakira McKinley, the Guidance Counselor, who is blowing our socks off every time we speak to her. She's going to help parents and families talk about ways to help kids get through the current situation at home with some strategies and a little bit about what's going on based on her observations within the school. So we hope that you'll join us for that. That's being offered by our Programs Committee, and we would love to make some new acquaintances and get people more involved in the PTA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Millie. And I apologize again for trying to skip you. It wasn't intentional. I promise. Okay. So now we can go into the first recognition of the audience. I've already given the ground rules, so we can skip over that. Do we have any takers? I can't see, so do we have anybody?
I'm sorry. I'm trying not to make you dizzy.
Okay. Yeah. All right, great. Okay. So now we'll move on to our agenda. First up is our Consent Agenda, which is items 1 through 10. Do I have a motion? up is our Consent Agenda. Items one through 10. Do I have a motion? Do I consent agenda? Therese, second. Lori, any comments or questions about the consent agenda? All in favor? Okay, great. Next, we move on to Business of the Board. Item number one, approval rate. Resolved, the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the provision of a police officer that a town in East Chesapeake to patrol in the red traffic on Mill Road in Simonoball Boulevard before the school day and to be present for certain school district events, including the athletic events and elections at a rate not to exceed $75 per hour for services rendered per assigned police officer not to exceed $35,000 for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Therese, any comment? Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next, approve a side letter agreement. Resolved, the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter agreement dated November 12, 2020, by and between the district and the CSEA, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Lori, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, number three. This is the Resolution Regarding Funding of COVID-19 Testing. This is a little bit a long one, so bear with me. Whereas, school buildings in New York State were permitted to reopen in the fall of 2020, when statewide positivity rates were well below the 5% marker set by the governor, if school districts fulfill the COVID-19 guidance of the New York State Department of Health and Education Department. Whereas, New York State COVID-19 community positivity rates have been climbing in November 2020, and surveillance testing is one mechanism used to track the viral spread and help maintain the health and safety of our school communities. And whereas, under the governor's microcluster initiative, school-based random surveillance testing is mandated to keep school buildings open for in-person learning. And whereas, public school districts have faced exceptional burdens on finances and administrative and faculty time in effort to ensure the health, safety, and ongoing education of the young people of our state. And whereas, schools in locations where community transmission rates are resulted in a detonation of a microcluster zone are not set up from a financial, logistical, or regulatory perspective to take on the added burden of random surveillance testing. And whereas, the county departments of health are currently overwhelmed in coordinating the community-wide COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, rapid antigen testing provided by the state to some school districts have been determined by public health professionals to be insufficiently accurate to permit a negative rapid test to clear individuals to reenter school buildings, necessitating a further round of testing that may require administration by medical personnel. And whereas, school districts may desire to achieve the regulatory ability to pursue surveillance testing within their schools, either as a district or working with an outside medical partner. Now therefore being resolved, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District calls upon New York State leaders to ensure the public school districts receive the financial, logistical, regulatory support to undertake mandated and board-approved COVID-19 surveillance testing of students, faculty, and staff to ensure that school districts are not forced to keep school buildings closed due to a lack of resources to ensure the safety of students and adults in school buildings. The Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District directs the district clerk to send a copy of this resolution to the following people: Amy Pollan, State Assembly Member; Chuck Schumer, State Senator. It's actually Frank, we'll send her. Andrew Cuomo, the Governor of the State of New York; Carl Heskey, the Speaker of the New York State Assembly; Andrea Stewart-Cousins, the Majority Leader of the New York State Senate; Michael Benedetto, State Assemblyman, Chair of Committee on Education; Shelley Meyer, State Senate Chair, Committee on Education; Dr. Howard A. Zucker, Commissioner of Health; Betty Rosa, New York State interim Commissioner of Education; Andrew Brown, Vice Counselor of the New York State Board of Regents; Frances Willis, New York State Board of Regents; Karen Bellinger, Executive Director, Westchester Button School Boards Association. That is it. So this is essentially a petition to those individuals to write a letter, or actually, write a letter to those individuals, petitioning for more financial logistical support for the surveillance testing we'd like to do or need to do. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Laura, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. That's it for Business of the Board. We're going to move on to Personnel. Resolved, the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the following personnel recommendations, A through B, as follows. Or actually, I can read, A through B. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Laura, any discussion? Nope. All in favor? Okay. So this brings us to our second recognition of the audience. That could be for any item or any topic at all. Do we have any takers?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Jeannie Whalen, President of Tuckahoe Teachers Association. And I have some remarks. I didn't time them, so I do hope they stay within the three minutes. I want to thank the PTA for their lovely treats this morning. They really did bring a smile to all our faces this morning and helped us work through our day. So thank you so very much. And for all those wonderful things that you just described, that you've been doing for the kids and down at Cottle, and that activity today sounded just lovely for the kids. So thank you for that very much. I might say some things that Dr. Goodman has said, but in fact, I think she and I probably could have written one statement. But I'm going to say it in my way. So tonight, I am speaking on behalf of all the teachers in the Tuckahoe Union Free School District to reiterate and emphasize the same idea that Dr. Goodman just shared with you and that Dr. Lynnahan has shared and the PTA has shared with you on the importance of mask wearing and avoiding social gatherings. And this is especially important now as COVID cases are increasing in the region, the weather is colder, and the holidays approach. The teachers of Tuckahoe have done everything within their power to keep the community safe and to keep the students learning and in school as much as possible. We teach all day wearing our masks. We maintain social distance from our colleagues. We hold meetings via Zoom and clean and disinfect throughout the day. We also know that because we work in a school and deal daily with the public, we must be especially vigilant and cautious in all aspects of our lives so as not to endanger the health of our students and our colleagues. And yet, currently, there are about seven teachers under quarantine due to their exposure to a COVID case in the past week here in school. The remainder of the seventh grade teachers are also working fully remote because staffing issues made it difficult to maintain in-person learning. But the teachers can't do more than we already do to keep our schools safe and open. We must rely on the Tuckahoe community. The current thinking when it comes to COVID, supported by many studies, is that schools are not the super-spreaders of COVID that we feared that they would be. Where COVID is spreading most is due to social gatherings in homes where people relax, eat, talk, hug, and kiss each other. And these private gatherings, however, seriously endanger the school's ability to remain open. All it takes is one case, and four to five teachers have to quarantine. Imagine one party with one guest who is positive, spreading it to three children in a family, all who attend Tuckahoe schools. It could mean 12 teachers under quarantine.
Pardon me, Ms. Whalen. There's 30 seconds left.
Okay. I'll speak faster. I must emphasize that living and working under quarantine is no small thing. It is actually quite difficult and stressful. And these teachers are required to work in an isolated room in their home and are not supposed to have contact with their families for 14 days. And this means they can't help their spouses, help their children with homework, or help care with their family in any way. And they must do it while teaching remotely. And what these teachers are doing right now is, quite frankly, extraordinary.
Ms. Whalen, we're at the three-minute mark.
Okay. And I'm the only person here. I'm going to ask for a request.
Hold on one second. So just briefly, how many people do we have tonight that need to speak? Is there, do we have any more that want to speak today?
No. She should be able to speak because I think it's important that our community hear directly from the people who are working directly with our children. This is very important. I don't feel that she should be stopped.
Yep. That's what I was getting at. Because you represent the teacher, obviously, you're more sympathetic to the board, we should hear you out certainly. And I just want to make sure we don't have a long line of people waiting to speak. We don't.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kasson. I think I'm the only one here.
We do not, Peter.
So go ahead, Ms. Whalen. You're fine. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. But you took away my jive. All right. All right. So anyway, imagine how we all feel when we see or learn on social media that families within this community have hosted parties or events. It's shocking and disheartening, to say the least. And quarantine is only a major inconvenience. We are also at risk of contracting COVID and spreading it to our own families. We have teachers who are immunocompromised, who are pregnant, who are fighting cancer, who absolutely should be able to trust that the parents in this community, and I know most, everyone, most, are doing all they can. But we need everybody to do all they can. There is a proposal before the Board to bring back fourth and fifth graders every day to Cottle. The teachers know more than anyone how important in-person learning is for these children. And it is both our desire and our duty to help make it happen. And we have. And we very much supported it a week ago. However, we fear now that the current rise in cases, the approaching holidays, families will gather indoors in spite of all our pleas. And if this is the case, then bringing more children into the building immediately after Thanksgiving may not be the wisest decision. Right now, the teachers don't feel very safe. I ask the Board to think deeply about postponing bringing in the fourth and fifth graders to Cottle every day until after the holidays and to speak strongly and powerfully in the community to support the schools and the teachers by advocating mask wearing and social distancing, as I know you do, especially you, Therese, so that we can bring them in safely in January, if that is your decision. So this is my call to action. The burden falls on the members of this community and all our communities, mine at home, all our communities, to keep our schools safe and open for the benefit of the children. If we fail and cases rise, we will end up fully remote. And the impact will not only be devastating to the children's learning, but also to all families who need to work but can't if their children are home. And I say this in solidarity with all the public servants, the train conductors, the police officers, the EMTs, the firemen, the transit workers, the doctors, the nurses, all the healthcare workers who need our support too. And I believe personally that we are in a battle for the future against this virus. I believe that the consequences if we fail are dire. I beg every family in this community to keep your holiday celebrations small and intimate, knowing that we will celebrate double next year. Meet online, Zoom with all your friends, but please follow all the guidelines set by the governor and make the necessary sacrifices for the larger good and the future of our children. Thank you very much for the extra time. I spent time writing it, so I appreciate it very, very much. And thank you for listening.
No problem, Ms. Whalen. Obviously, you do represent teachers, so you are a different category. And also, just in the future, just let us know if you need a little more time. We're always going to be ready for you. It's not a problem.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
Hi, it's me again. Is it possible to permanently allow time on the agenda for the teacher representative so that she's not part of the public comments? I mean, I feel funny that I get more time than she does. She's more important. Is that possible?
I'm sorry, Ms. Whalen, you're really hard for me to understand. Can you repeat that for me? Or can you just say a little?
I'm sorry, between the mask and everything. I'm asking if there could be a permanent, I don't know what the bylaws say or whatever, but is it possible for the teacher representative to permanently be on the core meeting agenda rather than in the second, you know, public comment portion? Because I think there's always going to be very important comments to be made, and, you know, that there really shouldn't be a time limit on that, I would think as well. Is that doable or something to consider?
Yeah, I think in the future, when Ms. Whalen would like to speak on behalf of the teachers, that we just put it on the agenda as its own item, as a recognition of, you know, a recognition item. So I don't see an issue with that when, yeah. So Ms. Whalen, you want to come in the future and speak, we could put you on the agenda so you have your own slot. And same would go for any, any-
CSEA.
Yeah, CSEA President. Yeah, exactly. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to underscore, I've already told my daughter she's going to have a sweet 17. We just may have to change some things, the way we do things. But I am, you know, even not just as PTA president, but I'm totally on board with altering our customs and pushing things back and celebrating doubly, like Ms. Whalen said. Whatever we have to do, we have to do, and we'll make up for the lost time somehow, some way. Thank you.
Yeah. Again, you know, these rules and procedures are not put in place to shut anybody up. We, as a board, I think we've demonstrated that we want to hear from the public. We want to communicate with the public. But it is important that we sort of have order in our meetings. And we've been burnt by this in the past. And if you go back and look at some of the board meetings, you can see, we've been burnt by being too liberal on these policies before. And we just need to keep order and keep the meeting moving along. But certainly, within reason, we can make exceptions. We can make alterations. But it is important to have guidelines that we follow so that we keep the meeting professional and orderly. So it's not meant in any way to quiet anybody. We are always available. There's other meetings to communicate with us as well. You can email us. You can, we have, we do have more office hours that we can still make available. So again, don't misunderstand what we're trying to do. We're just trying to keep it orderly meeting. Okay? So if we don't have anybody else, is there anybody else that wants to speak? I think it's just difficult for me to see from here.
There is not.
No. I do have, I do have something to say.
Yeah. So I was going to let everybody, give everybody a chance to comment or reply if anybody wanted to say anything with regards to whatever comments were made. So Laura, you seem like you want to speak first. Go ahead.
Yeah. So two things. One thing that I heard that actually is not the first time it has come up, because I think I personally have mentioned it before over the last couple of years, and that is finding a way where parents, even before COVID came along, where parents or people within our community who are unable to come to a board meeting might be able to funnel questions. And sometimes that might be live questions. With technology and all of the things that we are doing, and just other, you know, committees and things that I serve on civically, we are able to do that. So I'm wondering if that is something that we can make happen, because I'm sure that there are maybe other concerns or even praise that we're missing out on because we're unable, that people can't come. And now that we have COVID, we certainly wouldn't want a whole lot of people showing up at a meeting anyway. So that might be something that we need to really move forward on, stop talking about it and actually do it. So that's one thing. And the second thing is, as a board member, I want to share in the concern that our PTA president and our teacher representative have said tonight. It is so important. There's nothing that is more important for a school community to do is the work community means that we come together, we join together for one purpose, and that's to do right by our children. And the way that we do right by them is also by doing right to our teachers and our staff here. I can tell you, just this weekend, my husband and I had it out with our son because he wanted to go hang out over, you know, a friend's house. And we went back and forth. But see, in my home, kids are not running me. We run the show. It's called discipline. It's called you can hold off. There will be an end to this. So he didn't win that. And he's not going to win because we run the show in the Gerald home. And so I would just implore that everybody, you know, kids are sneaky. So they are. You know, I don't know, some things, you know, I may not know that he does, but God help him if I find out. And so I know someone right now who is fighting for their life right now, suffering from COVID. And so it is important that everybody in this school community, I don't care what your beliefs are, what you think about wearing a mask, that you think beyond yourself, and if you want your kids in school, that you do what you're supposed to do. And we should not be congregating in the home. I personally am not from New York. I go home with, even when I lived in Atlanta, I went home every Thanksgiving season. I will not be doing that this year. We will be here, just the four or five of us, if my daughter comes home. And on top of her coming home, she can't come home until she has a COVID test. I want to see it. She's in the medical field. I want to know that she's safe and that we're good to go in our home. So these are some of the things- So these are some of the things that I'm doing at my own personal family, and I believe that we all can do. We owe it to our children and the people who serve them every day. It's just the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Laura, do you have anything, any comments?
Yeah, thanks, Pete. I'll just say a couple of things. First, thank you, Ms. Mealy, for your comments, for the PTA and all that they do, Ms. Whalen, for your comments also. And I will echo Lori in terms of coming together as a community and certainly as a board member, as we had mentioned here in the last meeting, that it is so important for us all just to pull together now and really do the right thing by our district and by our community. So I just wanted also to go back to the fourth and the fifth, just a couple of comments on that. You know, with this cluster action that's going on, you know, it's very difficult, I guess, you know, as a board member and as a board, you know, we sit down maybe one day and we will have conversations and we bring the community in about bringing four and five in and keeping that six feet, which my understanding is that that's what we discussed and what we will continue to do, and the mask-wearing and barriers. However, you know, things are changing so rapidly that I think that when we collaborate and when we get together, what's important to recognize is things, as you said, Ms. Whalen, a week ago, were so different, you know, to what we're facing today. However, I think that we, you know, we need to also just try to do the best we can with what we have as far as if we can bring four and five in, and it is really truly a six-feet and mask-wearing situation, and we have consultants and committees, and everything points in the direction that it's a safe and the right thing to do. I will certainly, as a board member, get behind that. But I do, I do agree that this is, this is a moving target, and I think that as the days go on, you know, we may become a yellow zone, so that might change the conversation altogether. And so we'll do the best we can to work with everything that we have in front of us and always do the right thing by the teachers, administrators, and certainly the students. So I just, again, want to thank everyone for the work they do. Dr. Goodman, every day, is just such a huge challenge. And it is, it's just, it's unbelievable, the things that, whether the phone lines are down, and then the next thing you know, something else is hitting. So you've been doing a phenomenal job, and thank you so much for all your hard work. And we, as I said, we're here on behalf of the community, and we will do the best that we possibly can to make sure that the students get an equitable and a quality education this year. So thank you all for being here and tuning in, and those are my comments.
Great, thanks, Laura. Teraz?
Thanks, Pete. Yeah, I do have a few comments. Thank you to both Ms. Whalen and Susan Mealy for speaking tonight and for always attending the meetings. I want to just acknowledge that I think that everybody's feeling on edge and anxious and definitely tired of all of this. I think that we should just keep our eye on the prize, which to me is twofold. It's keeping, obviously, the staff and teachers, faculty, administrators, everybody who works, who needs building safe every day, but it's also doing the right thing for our kids. We are in a pandemic. The pandemic of 1918 lasted almost two years, and I think that we can't entertain not moving forward with a safe reopening plan. I commend Mr. Marash hugely, and Dr. Goodman and Mr. Kilgallen, and I know that Mr. Marash is putting together a committee as well to engage teachers and staff in the building. But we are following science, and I think that we need to keep our focus on that. And what we, we may not know a lot of things about what's going to happen next week, tomorrow, and a month from now, and I don't think that those factors are going to mitigate what needs to happen now. But I do think that we know certain things that we need to focus on. Those things are that people who are asymptomatic have 28 times less the viral load than people that are symptomatic. So it's important that you are monitoring your symptoms and that you do the responsible thing for yourself, your family, your community, and that is get tested if you do have symptoms so that you know what to do and if you do need to quarantine. I also think it's important that people recognize the fact that we're already starting to feel strain on our supply chains and hospitals and for testing. And that if you're not symptomatic and you really don't have any type of a high-risk exposure, and you're quarantined for whatever the reason may be, you should just abide by that, even though it's hugely annoying. And again, it's not a matter of your personal belief or politics. For me, it goes way beyond that, and that's something that I try not to discuss anyway, especially politics. But so that's number one. Number two is that we are taking the safety of our staff and teachers very seriously. And I've had multiple discussions with Dr. Goodman, and to the very best of my knowledge, we have full PPE available for all of our faculty and staff, meaning that there are N95 masks available. And when we look at this current situation in healthcare, when healthcare workers were getting sick at the highest rate, it was really back in the spring, in March and April, when we went to work and were told we did not even need to mask. And so colleagues of mine that were sick at the time were not given PPE. There is PPE available, and if people feel unsafe or they're concerned, they should absolutely wear it. And finally, we've looked at healthcare workers, people who are taking care of COVID-positive patients in ICUs, in regular hospital rooms, on isolation, and when they are appropriately using PPE, which I think most healthcare workers are, the incidence of COVID is under 0.5%. And that was with a 10,000-person sampling. So I just want to kind of share some little pearls or facts that we do know, because I think that we should focus on what we do know and not project into what we don't know. And this is an incredibly anxiety-provoking time, and I totally understand that for everybody. And I, again, want to say I appreciate the fact that the teachers are so on board and wanting to, you know, teach the kids as they, you know, in person. I know that a lot of the teachers do support that as well, and I appreciate that you're nervous, and I don't, I don't want you to think that we don't hear what you're saying. We do. And Dr. Goodman is working also tirelessly with the Health and Safety Committee, of which Lori and I will sit on, where we have people who are physicians, who work as head of immunology labs, who are studying COVID. So we really do have the best of the best. We have excellent, exceptionally intelligent advisors, and we're following science with everybody's best interest at heart.
Thank you, Teraz. Thank you very much. Well, you made it easy for me with that because that's a top act to follow. That's very well said, and I think everything you said was spot on. Obviously, you are the professionals in your field, and I couldn't agree more. And thank you very much, Ms. Mealy and Ms. Whalen, for your comments. Totally understand your concerns. I get it as well, and we are very much concerned, I'm very much concerned about the health and welfare of the staff. But I do think, as Teraz very well articulated, that with the proper precautions and the proper PPE and following the plan, I do not think that our staff is in any real significant risk beyond what we all are facing. Again, I understand their concerns, I really do. But I also think that, as was said before, that in a pandemic that could go on for months and even years, as Teraz mentioned, education, in-person education is essential. It needs to happen, especially for our younger kids. And for me, my focus is going to be and continue to be, and the questions I always ask of Dr. Goodman and wherever we're together with regards to what's happening in the four walls of our school is, are we seeing any indications? And I know it's not always exact, but I think circumstantial evidence is there if it happens. Are we seeing any sort of spreading within the walls of our school? And I don't think we've seen that yet, and I think I'm quite certain we haven't. And that really is what we need to keep an eye on, in my mind, because as the community around us and the state around us is spiking, we are going to get more positives in the school. It's just a matter of numbers. It's going to happen. And I don't think we need to have a knee-jerk reaction to that. I think we need to just keep our eye on the ball as to what's happening in our school. And I understand, as was very well said by many, many people tonight, about what's happening outside of our school that we can't control, and all that should get better, hopefully will get better. But really what I'm saying is that I think we need to move forward with the fourth and fifth grade regardless of some of the concerns, because I think it's really important. At the end of the day, if our area spikes too high, the state's going to shut us down anyway. I hope that doesn't happen, but those tripwires are already in place. I think for us, we need to keep the businesses school open. We need to keep the option of in-person learning as available as it can be, and bringing fourth and fifth grade back, I think, is a big piece of that. So I do, you know, appreciate everybody's concern, but I am in favor of moving forward smartly, continuing to reevaluate. I think whenever you do something like this, you should constantly reevaluate and not be afraid to change course. Just because I'm saying on fourth now doesn't mean a week from now, if more data came in, I would change my tune. I both, I think we always need to be flexible and always need to look at what data is and respond accordingly. But as of right now, I think we need to push ahead with the fourth and fifth grade. It's just very, very important. So anyway, I think it was all very well said. Thank you very much for your comments. That's all I have. Anybody else? Okay. So I think we're done. If that's the agenda. Did I just say anything, Robyn?
Yes, we just have to close the meeting. Both to close.
Okay, so motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Lori?
Second.
Second. Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.